Good evening. Are you ready, Mr. Harrigan? Sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry. We'll start this January 25th, 2023 Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. We'll start with our meeting minutes. Probably need now all three minutes in for at least the minute, meeting minutes as Commissioner Francis, Bremen, and Ford are at least not present. We are expecting Commissioner Francis, but we'll start with our meeting minutes. I have a motion on the item. Commissioner Braun? Commissioner Braun, is there seconds? Commissioner Corcello, Scilio, sorry. Commissioner Braun?
The meetings, the minutes appear to be accurate to me. No changes recommended?
Or anything? Anything for the minutes, Commissioner Francis, or do we just?
They were fine.
Okay. Um. Commissioner Francis here, I think it's Commissioner Boweski Bowes out.
Correct.
If you've reviewed it, I don't think you need to know. Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Where can we vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. These six hands, Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Yes. Fair enough. So seven.
I think, Peter, you might have to mute in between when you speak.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
That's better.
Next item is eight fifty-five Stilson Road, request of Eric De Laurentis for a fifty percent release of a forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar bond pertaining to subdivision improvements on the A zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this was a two lot subdivision almost across the street from Osborne Hills School. Two new homes have been built and sold, completed. You have a report from the engineering department that they're satisfied that a hundred percent of the work is done. This is only fifty percent release. The final fifty percent has to be subject to a subsequent public hearing, which we've scheduled. But for now, we're just seeking approval of fifty percent reduction in the bond.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Release. Release Commissioner Levy, second from Commissioner Francis. Further? Any further, Commissioner Francis? Yeah, so pretty straightforward. Any other comments? Or may we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Six hands. Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Next item is our business. Seventy-three North Benson Road, eighty-six twenty Barlow Road, special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to an addition to an existing dormitory Faber Hall in the double A zone.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Faber Hall is an existing dormitory building located on the southeasterly corner of the university campus. The building is approximately two hundred and seventy feet northerly of Barlow Road and four hundred and twenty feet westerly of North Benson Road. A new building with a connection to the existing building is proposed to accommodate an additional one hundred and eighteen student beds. The new structure will be located northerly of the existing building and will necessitate a modest redesign of the existing adjacent parking lot. Proposed building is designed to match the exterior building in terms of its three-story height and building materials. Due to the sloping site, the proposed first floor will be partially below grade. Due to elevation differences between the adjoining structures, the new building will be approximately eight feet taller than the existing building with the overall height of approximately thirty feet. University reports that the building is intended for sophomores who are not permitted to have cars on campus. Overall, the university reports over three thousand campus-wide parking spaces. There is a two hundred and fifty-nine space lot adjacent to this building. The proposed site will eliminate eighteen of those spaces, leaving a remainder of two hundred and forty-one. The redesign of that parking lot will result in an increase of approximately thirty-two hundred square feet of additional impervious pavement. This proposal has been reviewed and approved for a certificate of wellness conformance, and the engineering department has confirmed satisfactory review of the drainage design. Our standards for consideration for special exception are as follows: one is the location type, character size, and use of the buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood and not hinder or discourage use of adjacent property or its value. Two is the nature of the location, the use such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic without undue hazard or congestion. And four is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation and development. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I should have started with the, with this in the beginning. I already kind of knew the answers for the record. Commissioners Levy, Corcello, and Collins, you've reviewed this tape from last meeting?
That is correct.
Yes. Commissioner Collins, you've read, yeah, right. You've seen the video from the last meeting?
Oh, repeat that, I'm sorry.
You viewed the last meeting on Fair TV?
Yes, yes.
I just, yeah, I already knew the answer to that was that question, but I want to put that on the record. So moving forward, may I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun?
I move to approve with one condition. I'm just adding one item to the permit, to the exception. Analysis, item five would be landscaping. My condition would be that the quantity of trees and/or mid-story, which is shrubs, that is removed to conduct this development would be added to another portion of campus separate and in addition to any trees that are required as part of the expanded parking lot. I have some discussion for that, but.
That's a, that's a condition of.
A condition of approval added to whatever other conditions we normally have.
Not a recommendation, okay. There a second? Commissioner Corcello, seconds? Commissioner Francis, excuse me, Commissioner Braun?
So I believe that the first four conditions, the first four points are met, that it is in the location type, character, and size in harmony with the orderly development of the town, being that it is a university of use. The nature and location and the use of the buildings do provide adequate access for fire protection. The streets serving the use have adequate for traffic, et cetera. Especially that this is all within Fairfield Hugh campus, and it doesn't even extend beyond the existing Faber dorm towards South Benson or Barlow. It goes between the dorm and the Quick Center parking lot. I believe it is in compliance with the plan of conservation and development. My only issue is, I drove by the site. It is an extreme steep slope from the back of the Quick Center parking lot down to this building. And I know that we discussed last time, they are adding, and I think there might be a typo in your, in Mr. Went's memo. I believe they're adding to the porous parking lot, not impervious parking lot. I think that might be a typo. I believe that the original parking lot was like three, something went down from three thousand to five thou- It went up from two thousand to five thousand, but the extra three thousand is porous, not impervious, which is good.
I meant to say, yes, the I am shouldn't be there. It's perfect. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
It means pervious as opposed to impervious, but there is a lot of development being proposed. And obviously porous is better than impervious, although it's not the same as natural land. So that, and I did notice there are quite a few trees there, and I was unable to determine from the landscaping plan if they are all being proposed to be replaced. But I would, I would just say that I think trees are critically important at this stage in towns, the state, the world. We need more trees. They do, they provide many ecological services, flood control, drought management, carbon sinks, shade, less air conditioning is used when, when you have trees for shade. So I just feel somewhere on campus, they need to add the same amount of trees that they're taking down, as well as mid-story, which is shrubs. And that, I think, would go, should be a practice looked at in future development as well. I think Fairfield Hugh could sort of set, set the example for, for making that omission, that we don't cut down a tree unless we plant a tree. So that's why I'm adding that as a condition, separate from any trees required as part of the expanded parking lot.
Thank you. Commissioner Corcello?
I think the application meets the standard considerations for a special exception. I think the commissioners' additional condition is reasonable.
Thank you. Other Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I would just add, I concur with Commissioner Braun's condition of approval. I think having more trees can only benefit our environment, and what better than, you know, a higher institution of higher learning, saying that example of being the stewards of our land. So I hope this is something that the commission supports.
I have a comment. Commissioner Levy?
Just by way of clarification, I just asked Commissioner Braun if she knows approximately how many trees or shrubs would be removed? Or would it make sense to just set a number for the applicant to?
Well, actually, I was going to add something to my condition that I forgot to say, which is perhaps they can simply be guided by the tree warden and conservation to have the same quantity slash qualitative contributions by whatever trees are being removed and shrubs to be put somewhere else on campus. Right here, it's a big campus. And if they could be guided by the tree warden and conservation, they could find a way to do that in a, in a way that makes sense. That's, that's, that's beneficial. And I do think there's, I was looking at the special exception regulations. They do mention landscaping. They refer to the special permit regulation that we are allowed, we do have the discretion to adjust landscaping requirements to whatever the particular circumstances are of the lot lines, topography, soil conditions, et cetera, site design. So that's a basis for me adding that to our normal analysis of special exceptions. I don't know how many, but whatever trees, shrubs are removed should just be replaced somewhere else so that we don't end up with a campus that's all paved over and we lose track of what's being provided and what we lost.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the testimony was there's four or five trees that need to be replaced. It's not a big number. So in this case, I don't think that's an onerous condition. I think that was their testimony that they were intended to replace the trees that they were going to remove. So I'm, there may be other, this isn't an example of one, but other development applications may not be able to meet that standard, but in this case, I don't think it's an inappropriate or unwieldy condition for this applicant.
Because Fairfield Hugh has hundreds, three hundred acres or something?
Yeah.
Somewhere in campus they could put.
I, I think their testimony was that they were going to do approximate to this building, so we can certainly have them submit a landscaping plan to show that. If not here, then where? But again, in this case, since it's not a, a large number of trees, I think that's easily accommodated.
If the commission's gonna, is okay with the condition of approval, I'm not going to stop it because the special exception is, should be approved, meets the conditions and should the board, should this commission go with the approval, condition of approval, I'm not going to stand in the way of it. I hesitate because I think that rationale put forth for it can be used for almost any application. And that can, in some instances, it's going to be onerous and not practical for those applications. Here we have Fairfield University with a large tract of land that can be able to accommodate that, but there's going to be instances where there's going to be a subdivision or some other property that's going to need to remove trees, rightly so, in line with what we've had in our past practices and past applications, and not going to be able to do that. So I hesitate making it a condition of approval as opposed to a recommendation. Trying to keep parties being treated equally, people, everybody being treated pretty consistently with the applications coming before this commission. Again, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that trees aren't important for the reasons stated by Commissioner Braun. It's all very, that's, she's right, it's persuasive. I hesitate because we use that a lot, you can use that rationale in almost any instance and make what would otherwise be a fair and correct and proper application all of a sudden not be that. I'm not sure that's path that I'm comfortable going down and making it a condition of approval as opposed to a recommendation. I think Fairfield, as Commissioner Went said, Fairfield Hugh is intending that, so I don't think we need to, nor should we. I'm not sure if it's wise to have that be a condition of approval and set that precedent at this stage. So that would be my only suggestion. I'm not, I mean, I, I think I have not reviewed the regulations for landscaping to see whether we have the authority to do it. I'll take Mr. Went saying that it's a reasonable and not onerous recommenda- uh, uh, condition of approval and Commissioner Braun in stating the regulations that she did. I'm just uncomfortable with it, but again, I'm not going to stand in its way. I just would put that out to the commission to wording's the wrong word, but just as a thought that I don't mind that this is going to happen in this case. But we should be mindful of putting that forth in other applications where we would take what would be a suitable application and make it unsuitable like this. So Commissioner Francis?
I certainly understand your point. To make some comfort is a, what, three hundred thousand square foot building? And not just a two lot subdivision, you know, it's, it's huge.
I get, I get that wholeheartedly. I mean, that's why I'm not too concerned about it. I'm not going to stand in the way. But I think we need to be treating applicants consistently and fairly and treating big applicants different than little applicants. You know, just on its face doesn't strike me as fair and consistent, but I understand the rationale and the reasons behind it. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, and I completely understand what you're saying. I respect your opinion. But, you know, it's hard to treat applicants fairly because land is unique. Land is different. It varies from plot to plot. And I, I think it's hard to judge different applications equally. I mean, we obviously are, we, we're fair, we are unbiased, but I just don't think it's, we can really pair one piece of land to another. So in this instance, we can do the trees as a contingent, but I'm comfortable with it, but I think we would have to evaluate it with future applications. You know, land is inherently local. It's unique and that's just, you know.
Commissioner Braun?
I also think both universities are very uniquely situated, and basically they have their own plans. We've basically accommodated all the growth plans and expansion plans that both of them have had. And they're also uniquely situated because they have acreage, and they are, as Commissioner Harrison pointed out, institutions of higher learning. They can set the example for where we need to be for stewards of our environment. So I think this is a unique situation.
Yeah, but I think they can set the example by doing it voluntarily, as they said they would, as opposed to being essentially made by us. So that's another point I would say is let them be the leaders in the, in it by doing it voluntarily as opposed to now us, they said they were going to do it anyways, but being mandated by us as well.
I, you know, I.
But I mean, that's, like I said, I'm not going to hold it up.
You hear, you hear people on all sides of the campus complaining, flooding from the ball field. Somebody was complaining on nextdoor.com about clear cutting off of South, North Benson Road, people on the north side of the campus. So I think this would be a good requirement to set perhaps a future direction to be cognizant of these issues. So trees can solve a lot of problems. So obviously you couldn't do this somewhere down on Commerce Drive. You, there's no, there's no open space there. Say plant a tree where there's not any green area to put a tree. Or if you're building it over a plastic membrane, you couldn't put a tree there either. But the campus has lots and lots of green space. I doubt they're going to fill it all up with buildings, and they could find a place to plant some trees there. It's a unique base of location and the topography. And this is extreme regrading. I mean, it has to be a fifteen-foot vertical drop from the parking lot down there. Adding more trees somewhere can only help.
Any other comments from the commission or coming from this vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
So C seven passes unanimously. Next item is eighteen ninety-nine Bronson Road, special permit application of eighteen ninety-nine Bronson Road LLC pertaining to a three-story addition. The first floor commercially used in a single apartment on the upper floors, I mean, neighborhood design business district. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this building, the building on this site was originally occupied by a bank. That bank was later converted to an art gallery in twenty, in two thousand, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty. The commission approved an application by the present applicant to make renovations to the building, establish an office for landscape design business, a small retail nursery, and a performing arts studio. The applicants who are the owners of the property are seeking, in addition to accommodate a single residential apartment that they intend to occupy, the addition will accommodate a first-floor office for the performing arts studio, which is presently located on the second floor. So that'll move down to the first floor, and that upper floor will be, become part of the apartment as well as the upper two floors of the addition. Plans indicate a total of two thousand four hundred and thirty square feet of commercial occupancy and twenty-one hundred and ninety-three square feet of residential, which complies with our regulations that limit residential occupancy to no more than fifty percent of the total floor area. The parking for that commercial space is divided equally between retail and office parking that yields a total of eleven parking spaces. The apartment requires two additional parking spaces for a total of thirteen, and that's the number of existing spaces there are on site. The site is bisected by Brown's Brook and is partially in a flood zone. The existing building and the proposed addition meet the required flood elevations for the first floor. And this addition is designed with an open pier foundation on the rear part to allow for compensatory flood storage as required. This proposal has been reviewed and also been approved and reviewed for certificate of wetlands conformance, and the engineering department has confirmed satisfactory review of the drainage design. The only change to the site plan, other than the addition, is a new one-way exit drive at the southerly end of the parking lot, which would be limited to right turns only, right turn exit only. On your considerations for special permit are found in twenty-five point seven point seven, is development shown on the plan and architectural plans and such characters to harmonize with the neighborhood, to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character and to protect property values in the neighborhood, preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and avoid undue traffic. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve this with the following condition that's recommended in the traffic report from September fourteenth, twenty twenty by Frederick. It's that second driveway for exit, exiting with right turn only onto Bronson Road be added to the southwest end of the parking lot towards gas station with appropriate driveway controls and arrows. That way the directing traffic, you know, out of the park, I guess, directing the flow of traffic within the parking lot into the southwest direction. I also do want to add, I want to express my gratitude to Mr. and Mrs. Kenny for their commitment to putting forth an application that's sensitive to environmental issues and also the Greenfield Hill community. I think when we think about next view space, we think about this. This is, I think, a great case study. I also want to give a nod to the neighbors. I believe adding this condition will prevent confusion and having patrons of the, of the store and the, and the school.
Just for my own clarification, Mr. Went, the condition is in, is or in line with what the application is, or is it?
It is, as I understand it, you're, you're agreeing with the applicant.
Which is fine. I just want to make sure that there was a difference, that I understood it. So that's fine.
I don't want to speak for Commissioner Harrison, but as I understand it, that.
Then, okay, then I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. So you, you were agreeing with your proposal to include the right turn exit only drive?
Okay, that's fine. I.
Yeah, I don't know necessarily needs to be a condition, but it's good to point out that that is a distinction. It's different than the existing condition, so that is.
Let's leave it as a condition.
We don't want the headlights.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. Yeah, we can make it a condition so that then they're, they, they have to do.
That's fine. Like I said, it was my own, because I want to make sure from both Commissioner Harrison and Mr. Went, if, if there was a difference, I wanted it to make, be clear for myself and maybe for others, but we're good. May I have a second to the motion? Commissioner Levy, seconds? Commissioner Harrison and everything for the. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I think this is an excellent proposal. It meets the, all the criteria for the special permit, particularly in this area where you do have a combination both commercial, you've got the residential and office that we approved a few years ago, you've got a gas station, you've got residences, and this will be commercial. It'll be plants, it'll be actors, and it'll be somebody living there. That'd be great.
Yeah, Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I was just, I had some questions last time about being in the regulated area for the wetlands. But that was already done years and years and decades ago when it was approved for, I guess, the bank. And I think this is probably a less intensive use, so that's good. Also, I appreciate having work from home, you know, not driving to go to work. At least two of the people that work there won't have to. And I think if you do add that condition, which was in the traffic report from what, twenty twenty, the first time around, that this was approved, that would probably help with safety also, I would think, because people in this sort of small parking lot would only be able to go in one direction, right? Towards from the entrance, like where the shop is, and then down towards the gas station.
It would still be a two-way driveway, but it would, but would help people exiting. If they're going south, they would exit out, take a right and, and go south. If you're going north, you could still exit out that existing driveway.
But the, so the new, is there, there's only one entrance, not one.
Only one curb cut presently.
This would add one down by the gas station, and that would only be right turn only.
Right.
Go on, David. Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. That would add safety.
I, I support the application meets the applicable standards, harmonizes with the area, it doesn't affect any property values, great for the environment with, and as far as traffic goes with the earlier traffic study and just knowing the area and what the uses are, it's not going to affect any traffic, so. Nothing further? Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
So C, six hands and affirmative vote, so it passes unanimously. Moving on to zoning compliances and coastal site plans. Seven oh one Harbor Road, coastal site plan application of the town of oversheat and existing deteriorated bulkhead with a new timber bulkhead at Perry Green, the R three zone. Right, Ms. Harrigan?
I'm just going to quickly share the site plan. So I'm Emeline Harrigan. I'm the Assistant Planning Director and Bloodplane Administrator for the town. This is a town application for seven zero one Harbor Road. This is the property commonly referred to as Perry Green. It's located in a residence R three zone, and it has an existing bulkhead that is deteriorating along the wall that you can see here. It's proposed to be resurfaced, and the project includes, I'm just going to send it on this one. The project has been fully approved by the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, who has issued a permit for this work to protect some of the high marsh areas, remove and replace some of the high marsh areas, and then resurface the entirety of the bulkhead. And so what they're essentially going to be doing is adding eighteen inches of material to the face. And if you can see via the site plan, one of the things that they have to do is anchor back that new bulkhead face. And so they are going to be excavating quite a bit of Perry Green. So when you see it, it's not just going to be an application from the water, but they also have to tie back and excavate about twenty-five to thirty-five feet back in order to secure the bulkhead in place. There are some pre-existing moorings provided as part of Perry Green, and per the DEP permit, those will be maintained once the new bulkhead is installed. This project, like. This project, like many others that are shoreline adjacent, will have soil erosion and sedimentation controls in place for the duration of the project. There is some slight regrading, as you can see in the right portion of the property, where they're just going to match the existing grade on the yacht club property to the east. Bill Hurley is listening in on the call. Should we have any questions for the engineering department who is coordinating this project? But other than that, it's a fairly straightforward repair to allow the existing condition of Perry Green to remain, but with an improved bulkhead.
Thank you, Ms. Hergen. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Braun.
I move to approve, but I would like to hold open our vote until we hear formal opinion from the Harbor Management Commission. According to the letter we got today, they said we need thirty-five days' notice. They'll probably approve it, I imagine, because they had positive feedback.
Let Mr. Wang address that.
The Harbor Management Commission has been intimately involved in this project from its beginning, including working directly with a design engineering firm in their comments. We had a long, we worked through to a long series of emails that they were involved with. Therefore, we didn't feel we needed to refer it to them because we thought we already had their commentary. So when, when we sent it to them, they said we support it. The letter says we voted to support it. We've been involved in the beginning, but you guys didn't give us the, the proper thirty-five days to comment. So even though we fell short of their thirty-five day window, they still provided comments that they support the project.
I just don't want to violate the statute, so like.
No, I, in my opinion, their, their response to, if they had requested more time to reply, I think that would be a fair, then, then we would probably recommend you not vote until they had the opportunity to do so. But despite the fact that we, they had less than thirty-five days, they still voted fully to support this project.
Can we get at least copies of what, of their support that they submitted to other agencies, like DEP?
Their, their letter basically says they support. The, the essential issue that they were concerned about was the number of moorings. There's the harbor, the harbor management plan has, and indeed, from the Perry family to the town is very specific about the number of moorings. That's all managed through the harbor, the harbor master. That has all been complied with. That was their chief concern. But the letter that they submitted a few days ago says specifically that they voted to support the project. I'm sorry, you don't have a hard copy? It's, it's, you're looking at, I know you're looking at a small screen, but the.
I have the letter they wrote.
Right, it says, you know.
Let me ask you this. Let's get us, is there a sec before, sorry. Get a second on it. There is a second. Does anybody second the motion? Second, Commissioner Harrison. Sorry, just so we can get that on.
Okay, so the letter says Harbor Management expressed concern. This app was not referred to them according to the requirements of state statute, apparently town code as well. And should have been referred to them thirty-five days before the commencement of any hearing or final action. Now then, they don't say, please do that. They say, it looks like they're saying, please do that in the future. But then if you look at the statute, it says, Commission, Harbor Management shall be notified of any such proposal at least thirty-five days prior to a hearing or where no hearing is held, at least thirty-five days, five days before taking action. Then it says the local agency authorized to act, that's us, on the proposal shall consider the recommendations of the commission. Two-thirds vote of all members of the local agency having authority to act will be required to approve one which has not received a favorable recommendation from Harbor Management, provided the provisions of this section shall not be deemed to alter the authority of us to deny or modify. So, I mean.
If you look at the, if you go earlier in the letter, before they said all that, they said, we've been involved in the beginning and we fully support the project and voted on July or July, whatever it was, to, to, to fully support it. So, so they were kind of shooting a shot across our bow, unintended, to say, hey, in the future, you need to give us thirty-five days. We were aware of the fact that they were in on this from day one, so we didn't think they would need the thirty-five days. But be that as it may, they did vote and to fully support the project.
It says, we look forward to further discussion of the matter with you to help ensure the most.
That's the going forward, make sure you give us thirty-five days going forward. But prior to all of that, there was.
They agreed with moving the marsh grasses from one place to another and all that.
They met and, yes, their, their preceding paragraph says that they met and voted to support the project in full.
If we vote to approve this tonight, can we still get those letters after? I don't think it'll change anything. I would. You know, when they voted to approve this, or whatever it was, in the minutes, or they wrote something to DEP, they expressed support, apparently, to the other agencies.
Giving that to us now that they support it?
They, there was a preceding process that required a certificate of permission from the DEEP that they were involved with and also supported. So they're making reference to that. But they also specifically said the commission met and voted to support it.
So federal and state approvals were recently issued. They supported those. We have a slightly different role, only because we do coastal site management review. And I, they haven't, which, according to Ms. Hergen, you know, this does not harm, it, it doesn't create any more harm. I just don't want to vote on something that we should be voting on.
Well, they, their letter is, again, it's, again, that they're taking a shot at us for not giving them the full thirty-five days, okay? That's, that's on us. But despite not doing that, they were clear that their board met in full and voted.
How much would it harm the project if we voted next time, if we got input from them? That would certainly be thirty-five days, because we're not even meeting until the end of August, right?
I don't know what, initially what you're going to get.
Is, you know, this, this is a town project where the town included those partners as part of the review for this. So it's a very different than having a private applicant where the harbor review doesn't look at it at all until it gets referred to them. So it's, it was a very different process for this particular application. I do think that the engineering department has requested that it be on this meeting specifically because they need to get it ready to, to do the work for this project and to do the RFP and everything else. So as, as a town project, it, it appears that the Harbor Commission is now satisfied. And again, as Jim stated, really wants to ensure that we give them the proper time for future projects. But they've been a partner in informing how this project has developed over time.
I mean, the way I, as I understand it, they, as they've been said, they've been involved since day one. They've been getting comments since day one, back and forth. The only issue that they have is, as far as I can tell, a technical concern that they didn't get thirty-five day notice, again, for the technicals, referral to them. What I see our staff's point is if you've been involved since day one, and referred to you since day one. So, I mean, I, I think, I guess, I mean, I guess it's a lesson that just, you know, lesson maybe, but to me, it's raising form over substance. And I'm a little, it irks me a little bit that they put this in writing when they've been involved since day one. And it looks like despite their email, their email, their, their letter could have been summed up pretty easy as we were involved since day one. We approved this, maybe in the future, give us thirty-five day notice, statutory notice, but they have not said anything. They haven't said anything other than we approve what's going on. And then the thirty-five day notice seems to be their emphasis. But again, to me, it's form over substance. I, there's been no, I don't see how giving an extra few weeks is going to lead to anything else. If they've been involved since day one, they've had, they've been getting feedback directly to engineering and to the state authorities as well, so, yeah.
Well, the only, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the only other important part, the most important part, is they actually met and voted to support it. So despite not having the thirty-five days, they convened a meeting, voted, supported it. So I, I don't know what additional time is going to get us, because they've already submitted the letter of support with an admonishment attached to it.
So nothing has changed in the design plan or anything else since they gave their support to DEP and the feds to, on this, on this permit? Nothing has changed.
Nothing's changed, and even when they voted on it and approved it.
Okay, okay. Well, based on everyone's representations in zoning that they were involved from day one, I, I'll change my mind. I'll, I'll go with it. I would still like to see a copy of it.
I'm happy to provide an email chain if you'd like it.
So that's, that's fine, but motion is to approve right now, so, and that's what we're sticking with, okay. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Francis.
One question.
I just had one comment.
Commissioner Francis, then Commissioner Collins.
When you said they're going to dig up twenty-five feet of Perry Green, but that is being restored after.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
I'll answer that. Yeah, yes, all of the excavation that they need to do for the anchorage of the bulkhead will be backfilled and restored to its pre-construction condition.
That's what you meant, but I wasn't sure. Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes, I'm just, just a little confused with the thirty-five day thing. This is just a CMA for them, but they did approve.
They formally met as a commission and voted to approve, even though they didn't have the full thirty-five days. And in so doing, they admonished us in the future to give them the requisite thirty-five days.
Okay.
Again, even though they've been involved since day one. Any other comments? I mean, as I said, I think Harbor Commission's point is form over substance. They, they felt the need to do it, so be it. Seemed a little unnecessary to me, but is what it is. Put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Six hands and an aye, so it passes unanimously. Right, moving on to our last item, the pre-application review.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, there.
Missed one?
Yeah, I, there.
Oh, I, that's right.
There's a newer agenda that I left on the table.
I'm sorry, I forgot about it. No more zoning compliance, sorry, Ray. Seven fifty Post Road, zoning compliance application, seven fifty Post Road Associates for an overall sign plan, design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, a new overall sign plan has been submitted for Chick-fil-A's occupancy of the former Joe's American Bar and Grill. Two individual channel, channel letter signs are proposed, one on the front wall facing the post road, one on the easterly wall facing Elliott Street. Each of the wall signs is just over twenty-one square feet, where up to seventy-two square feet is permitted. A single monument sign is proposed. The sign is just over five feet in height. It's just over thirty-two square feet, well within the regulation limits of fifteen feet in height and fifty square feet. The sign is also located in compliance with the required twenty-five-foot setback. So this is a new sign plan for the new tenant, and is our opinion that it's fully compliant. We did get a flurry of email late today that you probably did not see, so there's hard copy in, in front of you. Joel Green submitted a very lengthy letter, essentially making three claims. The first claim is that the signs can't be approved since there's an unpermitted change of use. My response to that would be that this claim is not relevant to the sign application that's before you, but more importantly, there is no change of use. Number two, the sign cannot be approved because it's not a permitted use in the zone, which I'm flummoxed by. The, my response to that is certainly a permitted use in the zone. There are many other similar uses in, in that district, and it's not a change in use, as I stated before. Lastly, there's a claim that this, this is somehow an unpermitted neighborhood formula business. But again, the response to that, it's somewhat perplexing that neighborhood formula business, and I've got a copy, a highlighted copy of that definition in our regulations, requires the use to be in a neighborhood design district. This is not a neighborhood design district. This is a design commercial district, so that reference is displaced. There's also an email from attorney John Nuff on behalf of the applicants that I won't read, but, but my opinion is, is he's making a question about use that's not relevant to the sign application that's before you. So I'll, I'll leave it there, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But in our opinion, it's a complaint.
I have a motion on the item. Commissioner Corcello.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Second, second Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Corcello.
Here's to meet the requirements, and I, I read the emails that were submitted today and concur with Mr. Wang's comments.
Commissioner Francis.
Appears to be an exact reuse of what it's been for fifty or sixty years, the same signage.
Commissioner Levy.
Just for the record, I had previously abstained the prior application. Been to my office for thirty-five years, have been at one Elliott place. I am now located on the post road, so I no longer see a need to recuse myself, as I won't be looking at this daily.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun.
It's hard to tell exactly how the signs will look. I kind of see a rendering. There are two wall signs and one standing sign. Is there a rendering of the free, of the, what, the monument sign that's on a stake or a pole or something? Where will that be in reference to the building? And are they cutting any trees down to accommodate the exterior?
They're not removing any trees to accommodate the sign.
Or the exterior dining? I didn't realize they had exterior dining there.
Oh, yeah, that's Joe's.
They've always had it, okay. Yeah, that's right. They're not expanding the exterior dining?
They're not. The monument sign is, is, you see, it's, it's five feet, two inches tall. You can.
Where will it be located on the?
Twenty, there's, if, if you can scroll back to the very first image, there's a site plan sheet.
M one?
Right there.
Which thing, M one?
You can zoom in on.
So that's on the post road, right in the middle front of the building, I guess?
It's, it's similar to where it's centered within the building. It's twenty-five feet off the property line as required. The Joe's Bar and Grill sign had a double pole, fifteen-foot-high sign was a little bit to the right of that, which was actually less than twenty-five feet from the street. The commission has some discretion to allow that, which they did in that case, but here, they're not asking for that. The leading edge of the sign will be twenty-five feet back.
And what does G one mean on this map?
They're just showing a flagpole location there. I don't think they needed to show that, but they're intending to put a, a flagpole.
Well, they have a flag in here also, but that's just a flag.
They don't need your, right, that's not a sign if it's.
So facing the side street and our, our signing, our sign regulations are very complex. But the one facing the side street is not problematic because it's not a residential area?
Correct. And Joe's had a sign there. It just was not an illuminated sign. So the sign on the front wall is very similar to what Joe's had, but smaller. Sign on the right-hand wall is also smaller.
Joe's signs were not illuminated? I don't remember that.
Joe's signs were illuminated. The one sign they had facing Elliott Street was not.
So this will be like a neon sign facing?
It's be, right, like an individual channel letter sign with, with a acrylic face. The monument sign is like typical. Our requirements are that only the copy can illuminate, and there's a note if we can scroll to.
The letters can illuminate, the background cannot?
Correct. If you, in the monument sign, there's a note that it's an opaque, it's opaque vinyl. So when it lights up at night, only the white copy will illuminate.
The red.
Red will not.
Like anything at night, just in the day. And in comparison to the Joe's sign, is this bigger or smaller around the?
It's about half the size.
Is the seven fifty the street number?
Yes, they're required to have the seven fifty on, the, the street number has to be displayed on the monument sign, so that.
The monument sign, okay, I see it, yeah.
It's going to be LED, not neon, correct?
Correct. Most sign now, the internal source of illumination is LED, but it's not exposed LED. It's covered with the sign cover, yes. And, and technology is kind of, the old art form of bended neon is, within these channel letters is gone away because it's much cheaper to do LED, but you won't see the LED diodes because they're covered by the sign face.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Or can we put this to a vote? To approve. Questions of, to approve, um, raise your hand. Motion to approve, uh, please raise your hand, um, say aye if you.
Aye.
Six hands and aye. It will pass us unanimously. Now we're on to our pretty last item of the day in the pre-application review. As this commission knows, this is a voluntary thing for the commission, but we, but, uh, these pre-application reviews to allow applicants come before us to give general, not in general, but an outline of a, a potential application to come forward, not full engineering or full architectural, uh, plans or application come with it, but just to give more of an abstract than a regular application and get our feedback. Don't normally have app, uh, public, we don't have public comments with it, but we, the commission is encouraged to not just ask questions, but to give feedback uh, as to what they're thinking for this application, to give guidance to the applicant. Rizio, how are you?
Chairman, members of the commission, Raymond Rizio for the record, at twenty-two zero three Fairfield. I'm here representing TVG Partners, who represent, uh, the owners of the property, twenty-one ninety, uh, LLC. Um, you all know this as the exciting property, our clients purchased it about three years ago and have been in the process of trying to figure out how to develop this property after it had been, you know, the subject of a contract for about twenty years. Um, this is what the overhead view of the property is. Commissioner Braun, I can tell you, we're not going to be removing any trees, I don't think there's any to remove, so I, I think we'll be adding trees, so at least that won't be a topic of discussion for this application. This is a very unique piece of property, and the hard part about the property is where it's situated, how it's zoned, what it abuts, and what's not owned by our clients, but enveloped inside. It has probably, it's probably, it's probably maybe one of the most unique pieces of real estate that I've worked on in thirty years of doing this. So the property is about six point two acres. You can't see it here, but I'll show you on the survey. Six point two. So if you see, there's this pent road here. That's this here, okay? That is the dividing line, both, believe it or not, you have one piece of property but two zones. So about two-thirds of it is DID, design industrial. The other third of it is design commercial district. Now, what's so unique about this, first of all, you had a massive cleanup there, but it's all to go, there's no limitations with regard to the way we construct this property. However, in here is a, and you've probably all been to Martell or been by it, and this is actually a public paper street. Um, it's used as parking by Martell, there's, there's, you know, but in, in effect, it is a paper street. Still controlled by the town. Um, you have a light that doesn't really match up to their exit if you've ever gone out of there. There is a small light here that you don't really see that kind of controls who comes out of here, it's at the base of Sasco Hill Road. You have a five-story office building across the street, you have industrial with, you know, former, uh, used car, uh, or car dealership across the way, and then mostly industrial properties along the back and the railroad tracks. So I don't know if you have a property, I don't think there's another property in this town that exists with these conditions. So property is done designed industrial. We've, we've had all sorts of interests, we've had it from warehouses, we've had it from car dealerships, we've had it from bus depots. We've had all these industrial uses, which contains two-thirds of the property. However, we don't believe it's our vision, I don't think it's the town's vision, probably not the planning conservation's vision, that the entrance from the west into town be an, be an industrial site on the post road. With that, has also come protection for you by having a design industrial, is that, you know, you are, for a piece this size, what kind of residential can you control? It's design commercial here on the one-third, which will allow you to do the retail, residential, kind of mixed use that I think is probably envisioned for the overall site. So we've looked at a number of different users. Our, 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 the, the, uh, the group we've chosen to work with, we believe has come with a plan that I think will satisfy, believe it or not, all the concerns, address all the different issues. We also have an issue with, and I don't have to tell anybody, my office sits right here and I look out the window every day. Is there's typically in certain parts of the day, there's a lot of traffic on that area of the post road. So everybody wants development, generates tax dollars. How do we do smart development that brings in tax dollars, makes great use of the property, and still creates the vision without ending up with a, with a mess there? So our clients have thought of an idea, and I think it's tremendous, we've talked it through with staff, it's going to require, we believe, uh, either a text amendment or a separate regulation for mixed-use zones, which is to come up with a self-storage building, which is totally permitted right now as an industrial use. The beauty of that is, it doesn't require, there's very little traffic, you may get six cars in an hour, requires very little parking. And then come together with a mixed retail residential use, and then provide some amenity area along this section of the Mill River. Um, so if I take you to, let's go, what we envision, you see coming from the west. So in your, in your DCD zones, you know, you're typically supposed to have retail, housing over retail, what, we still tried it, we want to keep with that concept. However, one of the things in the DCD zone, as you all know, and it's been, I can't tell how many times I've been to the ZBA on small projects, you don't want to have a project like this run through the ZBA with sixteen different waivers to get here, and on top of that, you can't have a use waiver in town, so you can't even get to the ZBA to get this part that you want to see, the DCD part basically used in the industrial zone. So what this has is, in, in your DCD zone, we're restricted by the fact that it can't be no more than fifty percent residential. And that just doesn't work over, but we're keeping with the concept of basically retail fourteen store, fourteen-foot floors on the first floor, retail, parking will be, be from behind, an excellent walkable streetscape, and then not too tall, one of the nice things, and it sets the standards that we're not really going to dwarf anything, because you have a five-story office building next door. You have a three-story office building across the street, actually where my office is, you have all the industrial commercial at back, so there's no impacts on any neighborhoods. So now the question becomes, how do we make this work? Once again, you always hear gateway to town, gateway to town, important. But you do have this big industrial zone of about over four acres. So we believe we can put four stories of what we'd call a really nice, um, New England-style, almost warehousing, self-storage with windows, and I'll show you, this is basically what it's going to look like as you come down the road. That will very small on its face as frontage on the post road, and then swing behind the residential, which will do two things. It will buffer the trains from the residential, yet not the, the, the bulk of the building will be sitting behind what the town has wanted up front. So we end up with, this building would be about a total of about a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, about forty thousand square feet per floor. Would require ex- extremely small amount of parking, an extremely small amount of of traffic. And then build what we believe would be an excellent designed, commercial-like-looking facilities with resident, retail on the bottom, residential on the top. We would have to, our access is we know that even though this is a town road, it doesn't line up with the light either. And it also most likely will lead with a major dispute between the two, the two property owners. We intend on leaving that alone, and then putting another residential building behind, which drives through back, and most likely, I'm sure as the state will tell us, that most likely require that to be a right turn only, leaving the site. But we'll have significant time, we believe, in our architects and engineers, by moving our entryways, basically one almost across from Bankwell, and then one further down across from where the, uh, where the old, um, bar facility would be. Because of the lights in between at South Pine Creek and Mill Plain Road, will give the ability for people to enter and exit. So you have very limited part, very limited traffic, very small parking requirement, by a large part, by almost, by, by basically fifty percent of the development, as far as square footage. And then you have the residential and retail component. I can tell you, we're planning on, probably about ninety-eight units. Having been involved with one specifically myself in the heart of downtown, that was ninety units, that has, people were concerned about the traffic that the anchorage would cause on maybe the busiest intersection in town, which is Uncle Road and Post Road, and we have not had one issue in three years. I'm out of that project in and every day, ninety units, you have never more than two cars going in and out, and never anybody holding up any of the traffic, and you've got schools there, you've got high schools there and everything else, so you can't have a better test case if you want to go take a look at a, a ninety-unit project on a major thoroughfare in town, and I beg you to drive up and down that street and see if you've ever had to wait to get in and out, and you won't. The nice thing about residential is it, is it, it's throughout the day. The other thing is it's a half-mile to the train station, all sidewalk, all off. Now, um, I know from living in the, when I lived in the beach area, that you had a ton of people walking from Roland Road, walking from Penfield, walking from the old post road to the train station. You will see some of that traffic, I believe, people, that'll be one of the attractions to walk here, even though it's not specifically situated downtown. On a nice day, it's certainly not a bad walk. So the question becomes, how do we handle all this, let me see if I have a couple more elevations for you. That is what, as you enter from, coming from Westport, that's what the, we, our vision of what the facility will look like.
That's Martell, the green building?
This is Martell here and here. And then this is building. So this is what the residential component would look like, and you'll see, this is about what you will see of the self-storage facility, the balance of it will wrap behind this whole first building of retail. I mean, retail and residential. So we believe this is an excellent mixed-use project. It is a, believe, a very, very challenging site, one that's got to be handled with the utmost care. And I think we, uh, to me, it, it checks all the boxes. You get significant development, good square footage without any impact, you still keep your quasi-industrial u, under, industrial area in place, but you don't, you don't bring it with all the with sometime all the issues that come visually with an industrial-type use. And then you get the attractive retail residential component that becomes really the, the eyepiece for the site. So my vision would be, and we'll have to talk with staff, is to do some kind of overlay zone that would apply to a six-acre parcel or a five, at least a five-acre parcel, it's a butts a state highway and a train station and is is, is in a mixed-use zone, that would allow residential to filter onto the design, into, onto the prop, onto the entire property versus being limited to this small section of the property. Here's the split right now. Industrial design commercial.
You're not envisioning this is, this is where I was having an issue with the self-storage. You're not envisioning a regulation amendment that would allow the self-storage to be a permitted use in the center design district? Or the, what's the one on the left, I'm sorry?
Designed, uh, center, center, no, this is designed commercial district.
Well, yeah, either.
Yes.
Commercial, you know, you're not thinking to expand it outside of an industrial?
Here's the issue. We didn't want to, I, I believe an overlay that would apply to a, a unique piece of property would be the right way to go. Versus, I, I can tell you how many times I've proposed text amendments, and what's the question? Where does this affect overall town? So we have two issues, we really don't want the self-storage, or I don't think the commission wants the self-storage in every commercial zone, and they don't want the residential in every industrial zone. By drafting a regulation that would provide in with certain parameters, in certain locations, defined by unique characteristics, there will be the ability to have an overlay of a residential component within an industrial district and have a, and, and, which is, which is what we need. And the relief that you would need from your traditional design commercial, which, which is and I think the commission's been looking at the fifty-fifty split with regard to residential commercial, believe it or not, we achieve about a fifty-fifty split of overall commercial and residential. It's just that we do it in multiple buildings.
What we've done in the neighborhood design district? Bronson, right, yeah, that was neighborhood design, am I right?
Right, we did that with, um, behind Banda, I remember doing the application. It originally went through the ZBA, but got appealed, and we came back to you folks for a text amendment. And I think, but you, you, you're, you're struggling with that.
What I'm, what I want to make sure is, because I, I've looked into self-storage a little bit. I think Morawak was an interesting case study where they allowed, they opened the use. They, it came out, you know, it blossomed apparently, a lot of facilities opened, and I think they put a moratorium in, stop it. To the point, because they didn't want so much of it. So it leads me to believe, and this application with self-storage leads me to believe that there's a market for it.
Huge demand for it.
Huge demand for it, but I don't want, you know, I don't, I don't, and I can't imagine the rest of the commission wants this downtown uh, or in other, you know, areas of commercial, I mean, industrial, I think is fair. Uh, but even then, I mean, I, I suspect we've got something we want to proliferate in town.
Well, here, here's the issue, and, and the town has expanded its apartment base. And with apartment base comes, and that's why we're, as you've seen the growth of self-storage, it usually trails the apartments. Uh, we, at, over at the anchorage, there's big units, and nobody has enough storage, they're all renting cages, they're looking for somewhere to put people who've, who've sold their house, where they're going to put their stuff. There's nothing really on this side of town. Um, and there's, and, and even that portion of, the, let's call it the eastern section of Westport. Um, it's a clean use, it's a good use, it's a great buffer from the train, and we, and we want to make it as inconspicuous as possible, and as office-like-looking as possible. But storage is a reality when you allow the amount of uni, the, the man for storage is a reality when you, when you create the number of apartments that you create in other parts of the town. This, we believe, because, what, what really most appropriate for it is because of the way it functions with regard to traffic and with regard to use, so that you get full benefit of developing a six-acre site with only traffic that could probably go on, that can go on three acres.
Your thought is also to keep this an overlay that's probably as limited as possible. Obviously, that jumps into spot zoning issues, but again, I guess that depends on what side of the issue you're on, whether you care one way or the other.
Well, I think we can, look, it's, it is not going to be specific to an address, you're going to have to meet specific requirements, as we've done with other overlay zones.
We've done it before, and, I mean, I think the important thing is to outline uniqueness of this property, uh, I think you've done that, we would do in the future, you have?
Yeah, when you're done.
I am, Commissioner Harrison, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for this. Um, you know, for those who haven't lived here very long, this is a, a piece of property that is very special. Um, in two thousand thirteen, there were several stakeholder groups, the Harbor Commission, Fair Plan, the town, they actually, you know, they were not satisfied with the X site cleanup itself, they were not, they were not pleased with the way it was going and unsatisfied really with the, with the conditions that X site had put in there. So they actually intervened, and we, and the town cleaned up. A lot of sweat equity went into this, a lot of stakeholder groups, have you met with them?
Well, there was no reason to meet with them until we have a feeling from the commission that there is going to be, that this concept has the ability to move forward.
So will you plan on meeting with these stakeholder groups that were involved with this cleanup?
Meet with whoever we have to. I, I've always reached out to neighbors on any project we're involved with, and if we need to reach out with people that are interested parties, we have no problem doing it. I, I'm a firm believer of having these discussions prior to a hearing that, uh, then, uh, at, at a public hearing where basically people are talking at each other versus irrelevant.
I appreciate this opportunity, I do, and I had another question, you know, Mill River is an important, um, it's asset to our town. We even have, you know, if you grew up in town, if you have kids in town, you grew up learning.
Look it over, I look it over from my office.
And I live down there too, and you, you grew up learning about Mill River. So what kind of access will the public have to this asset?
You know.
Will there be a boat launch, can you walk me through that?
Take, I couldn't, and, and I guess because it's informal, I can show you something off my phone, but I took a picture, and when you go by, you really need to take a look at it. The boat access. The boat access is going to be kind of an issue because you have these sheet retaining walls here that probably take this about ten to fifteen feet above the water. Um, I will tell you, we will do, oh, look, we look at this as an amenity. We look at it as.
Rendering up, there was something there I saw, right?
Yes, the, the landscape plan will show that we plan on having benches, big, big tables. Basically create this as an amenity area, um, that will not be shut off only to the community. However, when you start talking about a boat launch, you start talking about liabilities, bringing in boats, I got to tell you.
Like small crafts, a kayak, a canoe, you know, I, I, in other parts of the country where, you know, the water is accessible.
Yeah, no, I know, and I was driving across on Pequot Avenue the other day, a kid was doing backflips off the bridge. But, you know, so it, with it comes a lot of liabilities. I think we can enhance it, we can make it look good. You got to remember, you only can go really so far here also because you hit the dams at Tide Mill. Um, I'm not sure.
What, what was the bulkheads put in? Was that part of the remediation?
Yeah, I think it was all retaining walls because they, they, I think they dug out so much, so much, so much land. So these, these were all put in and these things are, like I said, I think it's, I couldn't get behind the fence today, but it's got to be five feet to the water from there. And then another, at least five to six feet up, so it's ten to twelve feet from the water. You'd have to build some kind of dock, then you'd have to worry about people coming in with boats. Um, I'm involved, and we own another building, one Post Road, and I can tell you, we have a beautiful walking area and every weekend I'm there cleaning up fish guts. But people throwing fish against the building. So, you know, public access is great. I think we can make this an amenity that walkers and people can enjoy. I don't see this as being built for a marina-type situation, um, but it's certainly something we'll explore and have engineers look at.
Yeah, I, I just, I think it's really important, you know, we have done a lot to make sure the site is, is good, and I just want to make sure the community benefits from it as well.
Why I'm not in front of you with a bus depot. Or a used car lot.
Another question, have you done a traffic survey yet or have any kind of analysis we can review?
We've looked at other, not tonight, I mean, once again, significant costs in developing this type of a project. When you know that you don't meet the regulations means you need some kind of, um, flexibility from a commission to know that you would consider an overlay here. When we come through for our special permit, we will certainly have traffic studies. And I honestly, I don't know of a less intense way to develop a site than they're proposing.
I mean, I would just like to make a bid to this commission, to Mr. Wen. I mean, I would like to, to see an independent traffic study in this area. It's so congested right now, I know we don't have a budget, but I hope we can appeal to the first selectman or somebody because I look not only there, but across the street too, that's going to be developed. Where the dog, doggy daycare was denied, but.
But I will tell you, dude.
Three of, and we all, you know, you work down there, I, I don't leave my house after four o'clock to go to the Stop and Shop down there because I'll never get back home.
Do yourself a favor though, when you drive up Uncle Road, you got ninety units sitting there, same, these are going to be a higher-end unit.
But it's not analogous to Route One.
Aqua, when the schools are in and out, is in the morning and when they let out around three, I'm just telling you. But what, what the difference is, is when does it change a level of service? So you get six acres, you're going to have to develop something. It's not, it is going to be vehicular oriented. So now the question is, if it's vehicular oriented, what can you make the best use of this six acres that doesn't really change the level of service? And it typically, a combination of self-storage will, I guarantee it will not change the level of service. It's not going to also relieve whenever there's an accident on ninety-five. And the residential tends to bleed out throughout the day from, you know, six-thirty in the morning, probably if anybody's going to Stanford, let's call it six in the morning, to ten in the morning, then throughout the day. This is, I think we're going to find, we're going to be very comfortable that this is the best way to, that can address the, this best type of project that can address the traffic. But we have to give you and prove to you that that's the case, and we'll have a traffic engineer and it'll go through and your city engineer will look at it. When we move from here to putting our plans together, putting a regulation together, and then also going through police in a, in a, uh, uh, you know, a pre, uh, what do you call it? Yeah, code review with zoning and all the relevant.
We don't often get detailed reports though, from the police or from, from the fire department, to be honest with you, but, um, I, I, I do think.
I hope you got it's up here and tell you there's no traffic. There's traffic there, but the question is, how do you handle it? And what's the best, what's, what is the, the optimum way? Not, not to ma, I mean, to maximize this thing, the best thing would be is say, put three hundred units there, or let's put a big Costco there, or put something like that there. This is, this is, I think, the way you get your bulk. I mean, you take a tax, from a tax perspective, you go from paying ninety thousand dollars a year to probably three-quarters of a million dollars a year in taxes without a lot of demand on services.
Anyway, I, I, thank you for that. And, um, you know, I think as you proceed through everything, I would like for you to meet with the Harbor Commission, with Fair Plan, other stakeholders who did do a lot of work to make this.
If I don't meet with them, if I don't meet with them, I believe they will be here and your meeting will be a lot longer.
Probably better that you meet with them.
Your meeting, your meeting will be a lot longer than it needs to be, I guarantee you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Braun, then Francis, then I'll go down the line.
Do you possibly go through, um, these different sketches, like sketches of one through five and just explain, are they one?
I'll take it through.
Different.
Pretty straightforward.
Spec seven, or are there different options of them?
No, so the, one through five, one is obviously, you've seen that, that's our survey. That's our overview. That's the top, top page. I'm going to take you from the beginning, just go through this. Top page, you've all looked at overviews. Next page, survey, I want to show you and let you know where the division is.
Road is the difference between DID on the right, which is.
Correct. It's, it would be east, exactly.
Did you say you are or are not seeking a zone change for any of the development?
My gut instinct would be to leave the zones in place and come in with an overlay. That would, that would apply to certain mixed-zone properties.
DID would allow warehouse, right?
Oh, yeah, we, then with that tomorrow, a special.
Allows commercial, retail, residential, no?
Correct, which is, so the hard part here is you got a vision and a zoning regulations that don't, that don't match. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think the town's vision for this property is industrial.
No. So is that why you're doing the warehouse there or no? You can't do any of this without having an overlay or some kind of zones.
Correct.
Amendment there.
Correct. Okay, so then the third part is just a, an overview of what it would, of what the buildings would look like overlaying the property.
Yeah, and, um, somewhere, and I would like to know the height of the buildings as well as the foot.
Buildings, go ahead, Ray.
Let's just, Mr.
Keep in mind, this is not specific, this is conceptual.
Yeah, one second.
We're envisioning.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't want to interrupt the, the, we get to the presentation, but I want, I just wanted to step back for a second and, and cover what I tried to articulate briefly in the staff notes. That this is a split-zone property now, as, uh, Ernie Rizio says, two-thirds industrial, one-third commercial. The planning work we've considered, uh, thus far, in, in a lot of the conversation we've had, uh, in potentially P O C D recommendation is to move the center design district boundary westerly to the Mill River to include this site. Which would allow more mixed-use development to, to occur here. Changing it to commercial and some of the other implementations of the other planning recommendations we've made for downtown would increase the percentage of residential that's permitted. That would allow the residential use that's being proposed here. But it would foreclose the storage use because now we're in a center design district scenario rather than industrial. So the, the, the question really is, is what the applicant is presenting here is rather than a center design district scenario, is there, um, uh, an appetite to, to, to think differently? And to do it in an overlay zone that would allow a mixture of, of all of these uses to occur. So that's the difference. Some of the, some of the planning work we've done thus far kind of envisions moving the center design district over to encourage mixed use. Um, but that wouldn't permit the, the public, or the, not the public storage.
And I also, the, uh, the self-storage. I also think the mixed use on the.
That's, that's all, I just wanted to, to put that out there because we've had some conversations in, in our, uh, draft P O C D, uh, work thus far has kind of talked about recommending, you know, extending the center down. But if there's another way to skin that cat to accomplish, uh, what this commission deems to be an appropriate use of the site, then that's, that's really part of the important piece here as to what steps should be taken to create the underlying permitted uses here.
I do, I just want, I just wanted to make sure that was part of the discussion before you get in, and then they go back to, I'm sorry, uh, to cut you off, Kathy, in terms of the, uh, the.
We were considering moving the centered design business, center business district down to the river or ECD down to the river?
Centered design district, westerly.
The downtown stuff, like be extended.
And I do think that's a good idea. The only issue is this property has numerous challenges. And given where its location, we do think that it, that's this part of the element is really important, not only for us, but for the town itself as regard to. I, I mean, the wars that, you're not going to just get these three buildings if you move the whole center design district down. You know, it's a whole different level of, uh, development. And when you put, if you put in office buildings in here, you put additional rent, um, retail or, um, residential. You're going to exacerbate the situation for which we believe that this plan does not do, uh, which I, we do believe this plan does not do. So we would like to come with you, I mean, with not wait for the design center to come down. We do think that this is an important building as a buffer. It keeps the sanctity of this site in play. Um, if you bring the design. Center district down, you also open yourself up to maybe some unwanted applications on a large site where I think you protect it by keeping it designed industrial.
It's not curiosity, just, what do you mean by unwanted? What kind of uses?
You're, you're going to get somebody who's not going to come in and, once, once you've allowed residential in there, you really don't have any, um, defense to any kind of bigger application, I would say.
Plus commercial, bigger buildings.
Residential, yeah.
Right, that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, you know, you don't want to lose control of the site. We think this way, this is really unique. I mean, I have never been where you have traffic kind of issues that you have, a paper road that services a, a restaurant as a parking lot. And. And a split zone against the waterway and a train tracks. I mean, it's, you know, this is.
Ray, I'm sorry, but before I jumped in and interrupted, you were going to go sheet by sheet.
Please get that out.
If you could continue, I might, can I intersperse his sheets with a couple of questions? The height of the buildings that you propose as well as the footprint of the building?
No higher than four stories, but if you have fourteen feet, probably fifty feet, right, Ray?
Yeah, Ray Sullivan, Sullivan Architecture Group. Um, the, the, the storage building is, is approximately forty-two feet, they go ten feet floor to floor, they're relatively low. Um, and the residential building, I, I can't read it from here.
Does that, do you mean the retail residential or the separate residential building?
The, the retail residential, the main buildings on the, on the road, it's approximately forty-five feet to the midpoint of the roof. So it's a little bit higher than this, than the, uh, storage building. You know, it goes higher up to the ridge and lower down to the e, but.
And what about the, the other building that's up behind Martels?
It, it would, it would be slightly lower than, than, um, uh, than the commercial retail building because it's a little narrower, so the roof won't go up as far.
So it'd be like forty?
So you're probably talking forty-five feet to the highest midpoint of the roof, something like that.
Forty, yeah, forty-five feet to the highest midpoint, yes.
Residential building that's U-shaped on the left, um, that, that's like a U-shaped building, but it's not just a little square thing when, the whole thing is the building, right?
If you look, let me take it to a page, but keep in mind, it's, this is conceptual.
Right.
Um, if you look at a.
It's above, this isn't a flood zone, right?
Yes, but we're, but we're going to be above base elevation. That's the, that's where you look back here would be, that would consider that you kind of U-shaped building.
Is it three residential above retail or two residential above retail?
Two and a half. What, what, the, 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 the thought right now is that there on the second floor, you have apartment buildings, you know, a flat. And then on the third floor, you'd have a duplex unit. So you walk into the third floor and have an internal stair that goes up to maybe a bedroom up on top. So we're just trying to kind of keep the scale down, uh, while maximizing the, uh, you know, the size of the units. So by using a traditional pitched roof, you know, we're using part of what would be the attic area.
So the first floor would be fourteen-foot tall retail.
Correct.
Second floor would be.
Retail and amenity. So you'd also have your amenities down there for the residential, yeah, all that stuff, yeah.
Second floor would be a one-level apartment.
Correct.
And then the third and fourth would be like a loft over a regular, you know, ten-foot high.
If you go up on Uncle Road, it's the same thing. They have, there, there are lofts on the second, on the third, there it's.
Have a slope ceiling.
Slope ceiling, you have lofts built in that can only be accessed by an interior staircase.
The footprint of those buildings approximately, I mean, I know the other one's a hundred and six, no, it's, um.
About four, these are about forty, this is about a forty thousand square foot. And these are probably twenty and twenty.
Right, yes.
Sir, can you just identify yourself, please, with the record?
Uh, Ray Sullivan, Sullivan Architecture Group.
Thank you.
And the other U-shaped residential around, what footprint is that about? That's straight residential, right? Four stories, two stories over parking.
Correct, correct.
Retail doesn't have.
Even the retail, the retail won't go, take up the whole floor in depth, you're going to have parking underneath because you're going to need access to the retail.
Parking below?
No, parking.
Low-grade parking?
No, parking below the, below the res, second floor residential.
Behind the retail.
Correct.
And the, the, the footprint of, uh, of, of the rear building, uh, is seventeen thousand five hundred. Two and a half stories from that.
So that is smaller than each of the twenty thousand? It looks bigger to me, but, okay.
It, it's.
Different shape.
It, it's, it's a single-loaded cold, uh, so it's not as wide. You know, typically the, when you go upstairs into an apartment building, it might be seventy, seventy-two feet wide. Uh, because we didn't want to be, uh, staring at the, the railroad going by or the noise. There, there's a corridor here and a unit in here. And then because, you know, rather than looking at the back of the restaurant and equipment and whatnot, that's a single-loaded corridor. So here you're looking, you know, internally, and then, and then that's a single-loaded corridor and you're looking out at the water. So it's a thinner building, that's, that's why.
So the storage building is not going to protect those from noise, obviously, just in the first building.
Well, this, this is going to protect itself because there, there aren't any units facing the.
Example, if you, once again, if you go like on between exit twenty-one and twenty-two, you'll see a condominium building that's off of Uncle Road that is all brick on the back. It's like wall. In effect, that's what the storage building will provide to protect the residential. And then the back of this building will not be, this will be the corridor and this will be a solid wall so that you, you have the protection.
And that's courtyard.
Looking into a courtyard. That, conceptually, keep in mind, this, this thing's got to evolve when we, we're, when hopefully feel comfortable coming back with you with a, an amendment that you guys will be comfortable with.
There's a lot of parking, even though you have parking beneath the building. Do you know about why you need that much, is that for residence?
Right now, what we consider is basically one and three-quarter spaces per unit on the residential. And then I think there's about, I have the numbers right now, hold on one second, I'll tell you in a, in a second. And you have about, on the parking, you have like about twenty spaces for the self-storage and then for the retail, you need about sixty spaces.
And that's what's scattered throughout the development?
Yeah, the one and three-quarters is, 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 is a very safe number.
And I just had another.
All one and two bedroom units.
The, my recollection of the wetlands permit was that that bulkhead thing is supposed to be removed and the shoreline is supposed to be restored to actual wetlands. That should have been done probably the last couple of years, but that to me, you'll have to check obviously the wetlands permit.
Tackle that with.
It's inland and tidal, because this whole body of water is tidally influenced all the way up like another like mile or something.
It's interesting, the harbor ends at Tide Mill.
Yeah, but it keeps, the tide goes up and down.
No, I get you.
Are up, you know, um, but, um.
Once again, that's all predicated on the fact, can we do this overall? Well, mixed regulate, bring this regulation, a regulation similar to this that allows this type of function to come back.
So, okay, so my thought is, um, you know, you have an attractive-looking design, um, that coastal area, but assuming the wetlands have to be restored. Um, I think a more natural design would be better, um, as opposed to a lot of Disney-esque things down there. And, um, that would help me an awful lot. And I also don't like parking right bumping up into there. That's all in the regulated area, although I will say the regulated area has now changed. It was a hundred forty-four feet, now it's a hundred feet townwide. So that, that'll be a wetlands decision, but, um.
We'll, we'll, you, we can't go forward until wetlands tells us what we can do in that area.
I feel strongly that wetlands probably would not approve all that activity in there, and they would certainly want you to, to comply with whatever the permit conditions. And they would certainly want you to, to comply with whatever the permit conditions already are from back in the day when they approved. The site for the cleanup, which was a long time ago, you know?
We'll deal with that.
Been a big issue in the town, as you probably know, you know, going back thirty years of pollution, thirty years of cleanup. They finally cleaned it up, but that.
Which, I've been here for thirty years.
So, so to me, that whole area should be more natural. There should be public access. And maybe a boardwalk set farther away from the shore to leave it more natural boundary with natural up in space, because this whole site was remediate, remediated. Not like it did on the metro center where they put a plastic membrane down. This is actually clean soil supposedly.
We know that.
Yeah, so, so you can actually do stuff.
Our clients have followed it.
Plant trees there and stuff.
Well, we won't be taken any away and whatever, we're, we're going to have to comply with whatever wetlands gives us.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Francis?
There's no retail on the back.
No.
Okay, and my only comment, it's, it's an attractive plan. I, I think it works for the site. One, are they leaning towards making the large buildings apartments instead of condos?
Well. There's, there's, there's all sorts of issues. You have financing issues, you have. Demand issues and zoning really is irrelevant to whether it's condos. Or apartments, it's just units. Whether it's a co-op, whether it's an apartment, whether it's a condo, for zoning purposes, they're all the same. I can tell you many apartment buildings are being built. I know ones that I've been involved with that are built that they also could, should market conditions change, turn into condos. The, the economics of this is that it works as an apartment building. And, but as far as zoning goes, it's a unit. It could be a co-op, it could be a condo, or it could be an apartment.
Well, I, I would just say as an older person that I know lots of people, my age group, who want to sell their Fairfield homes. And they really don't want to rent. They really want condos. I think that's why Greenfield Hunt is so popular and so popular and that. Rose, whatever it is over near GE, that I would think you could market condos there to Fairfield residents over seventy in about a minute. Maybe I'm wrong.
Interesting, uh, because in other respects, knowing firsthand, some of the stuff is slowed down. They're not, it's, it's. You know, I know some of, some of the things in the BTR were just to fly off the market, don't fly off the market. In the end, that right now, their studies have proven there's a demand for these type of units. There's a demand for this type of location. And we like, we really like the balance of the two.
A lot of downsizing going on though. That's all I'll say.
I'm going to go down the line, so if I already went, I'll go over there, go ahead. Terms of the storage building, I think that's an appropriate use. It'll serve as a buffer with the, the railroad tracks. And it's certainly needed if you've got apartments. If I ever move, I'm going to need a place for my snowboards and bike and, you know, most people in apartments have that need.
I can tell you, you, I know you've always pressed the bikes, the apartment things that I've looked at. You can't build a bike, a bike shed big enough for the amount of bikes, especially in a town like Fairfield where people enjoy it.
And particularly since, as I know, getting down the post road on a bicycle, you can bypass all the traffic to the right as long as you watch for open doors. So you may have many people biking into town from here, so the storage would be very good for that. And I understand you're going to leave the pent road as parking and. I don't know if there's litigation there or not, but.
There was over the years and it's, I think, tried to, at one point it was. There was some litigation over whether it be abandoned or not, was not abandoned, it remains a town right away.
But there's no plan to. Deal with that later when the proposal comes.
I, I assume, I assume, I assume some interested parties will want to be heard.
And then.
Like I say.
Yeah, my other thought was, you know, in terms of the parking on that western side there, you know, between the amenity area and the buildings. I mean, the storage area, there's no greater, you know, rental per square foot probably in storage. Perhaps some of the parking, particularly, you know, I like the fact that the buildings are abutting the post road rather than set back with parking in front. And similarly on the front portion of that western parking lot, perhaps some of those, perhaps it could be landscaped more. Left primarily as an exit or a means of egress and perhaps some of those spots could be moved under the storage area.
We can definitely look at that. My, my gut instinct is that's kind of a lethal over there and. Because you want to get to be able to get to the other side of that light. I, I don't ever, I, I would envision that the states could tell you that's going to be a right turn only. I don't, I don't.
I believe it is an exit, but perhaps landscape it more, make it primarily just a, a means of exit and eliminate some of the parking there. And perhaps move it under the storage building.
We're going to look at all your comments.
Back to me.
Commissioner Podolsky?
Thank you for the presentation. To go off that, can you talk about the traffic pattern again? I, as far as like how you enter and leave?
I think what will happen is certainly for the storage, it's going to, everybody will enter here. I think you're going to have two men, means of ingress and egress, be able to circle here. One of the things also is. We're going to be dealing with the fire department, all the projects I know even what they want circulation of the building, they want circulation of the site from the interior. So this will allow emergency vehicles to circle, circle the site. So you'd have an entrance and exit here, entrance and exit here. My gut instinct is that'll be a right, right turn only there, just because I don't envision. Anybody making a left after three o'clock. We have lights. Light is about right here, so you're going to have a light here and then you have a light a little further down at South Pine Street that will allow traffic, for breaks in the traffic.
And so specific to the storage unit, and I don't know if there are answers to these questions yet, but would there be, like, could you access the units externally as well as internally or just internally?
Currently, our, our thought process is that it'd be, it, it would be from the internally, correct?
And I, again, I know this might not be an answer that you have yet, but as far as can people access twenty four hours a day?
Typically, yes.
Yeah, okay.
One thing that's interesting, I did a similar project in Lordship. As you get off to go on Lordship Boulevard, if you make a right, there used to be an old motel motel there that was just horrific. That was renovated into residential apartments and then another residential apartments, but it backed up to the town transfer station and. And they put a Cube Smart, which was a whole different look, but it was a self-storage, a higher end self-storage. That acted as the buffer between, believe it or not, the transfer station and the, and the apartments. And it totally reworked the entire site. So in the right place, the right locations, self-storage can really be an, an amenity in a situation like this. It provides many. Different characteristics that I think helps make the residential work.
Do that, and so there would be dedicated parking just.
Self-storage, yeah. You don't need much, I'm telling you. If you get, people typically leave their stuff there for months or the average was what, eight months, a year?
Sometimes it's five or six years.
Yeah, and, and, and people don't come back to look at it. Most of them forget it.
Storage wards.
I know, I, I've actually, like, is there, are there any security concerns with self-storage?
No.
Everybody has a card. They're issued a card, so only the people that have the self-storage units can enter and go into them because it's certainly.
Okay, I mean, I've used a self-storage unit before and that's why, like, you go in and they're behind. They're like behind.
Not in this. Now it's changed.
There'll be sixty cameras.
Right, great. It has been a while, so.
It's also air-conditioned, climate-controlled storage, heated of course and air-conditioned.
Okay.
So I mean, it's a state-of-the-art facility. It's, it's probably as nicer, if not nicer than the apartments.
Yeah, so I'm very happy about seeing this kind of middle density residential proposed here. I think that's a good use for, for the site. I can't get excited about self-storage. I, I agree, that's, it seems like an appropriate use. I understand there are traffic concerns here, that notwithstanding, I, I generally would, would rather, we're, we're getting more excited about some sort of. Retail use there, but, but again, understand the, the traffic.
Tough time. You have a tough time permitting a large, I mean, you could probably, you remember, you could put a hundred and fifty thousand feet of retail there and then.
Guess what he has to do?
We all better get our bikes.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I think it would be nice to see more retail on, on the ground floor, but again, I, I get that, that there are traffic concerns and. And I guess part of the, we'd have to see what happens with the P O C D.
I think it'd also be a real, a really great bookend for staff's plan to bring or recommendation to possibly bring the downtown center district. All the way down. I mean, it really, it really, you know, you're, it, it really becomes the start of the town, but it, it doesn't block it before you get into it.
Well, I, I mean, I wonder in, in theory, is that building, I mean, there's a pretty big chunk of it on, on the right side that, that does come up toward the road.
Which building, this?
Yeah, I mean, i- is that something that?
Yeah, that's why we tried, if you look, it almost looks like a loft. We tried to design it so that it looks like a loft, loft office building, so. Ray, you're better, you put it in there so you'll be able to, so. It's going to look kind of like a loft office building.
I mean, is there a scenario?
You've got to remember, you've got a five-story wedding cake right next door.
Is there a scenario where that could be designed where most of the building is self-storage, but just that piece that's fronting on, uh, post road could have a ground floor retail use?
It's, I don't know that it gets you anything.
I guess, I mean, from a pedestrian perspective, I think it's, there, there's something appealing about the idea of having a place.
Problem with, when you do that there, then you got to have the parking that can address so they can get to the retail. When you come around the back, you've got the field of parking that you're hiding. You're not going to, you have. We, you, if you were to make this retail. You know, these people can park and enter from the back. You're going to have, so this is going to, this corner is kind of a dead, a dead zone. From parking, from a parking perspective. So that's why we're going to have, most likely, this is where your lobby and everything will be for the self-storage. You maybe use these twenty spaces. But, or even right here, there's a few spaces. Once again, this is conceptual. You, somewhere you're going to have to sacrifice that you're going to get, you can't, you can't get everything you want circulating. And have all retail on the front because you, you, people got to have to be able to wa, get in there. So that would be the main reason that this will stay as one self-storage building.
And then last question, the, the parking that's all the way on the left, is that publicly accessible parking or is that just intended to be used by that residential building in that corner up there?
My gut instinct, there's going to have to be some component of public access to the water that we're going to have to filter through. Many different discussions before we get to you, which will involve some sort of reservation of spaces that public may be able to access. I, I just can't commit to that yet. It's all going to see how that all filters out. I get, we get the whole importance of the Mill River, but then, you know, you have safeties and liabilities and everything else.
Commissioner Collins, just because I went down the line, do you have questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and. I'm, I, I'm looking at a very attractive proposal here. The one question, or two questions, is kind of on the same topic as Commissioner Francis. Is there any reason why you didn't have any three-bedroom residential for people that might be downsizing?
That it, that it, uh, like, I'm talking, I'm thinking, yes, sir, no. The three, the three-bedroom has been kind of the bane of existence of the, there's, there's been a big concern, my understanding, I think three family, three bedrooms are warranted. It's been a, it's, it's been a bone of contention with certain commissions, I don't necessarily even know Fairfield's commission, but a lot of commissions that three bedrooms opened up to families. Which always opened up to the overloading of the schools. So there's always been a push to try and keep things at one and two bedrooms through zoning perspectives. That is what I, I, and maybe, and, and frankly, I think it's unfounded. I think the town has done studies as to condominiums. And apartments and the amount of children that actually end up in the school. Three-bedroom would be something I think there's a big desire for. I don't know that, but. It, once again, it's, it's a balancing act. We would consider, certainly consider having a small percentage of three bedrooms, but.
Well, you know, I'm looking from perspective, say, like with my family and my son is nineteen, he's in college. There's families with two or three kids that are outgrown the, the public school system. And they come back and sometimes they like to come back to a bedroom.
Look, we're, we would be comfortable with a small portion of three bedrooms. I think it's just been, and I think maybe is, I think this commission now has been well informed. For years, there were not track records in towns like Fairfield, Trumbull, Westport of apartment living and who lived there. I think the town has done a lot of research, the staff has done a lot of research to show that. Apartments don't generate, don't end up over, 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 overloading the schools and I think maybe some three bedrooms would be warranted, even I think in your. Larger condominiums, which you have sprinkled throughout town, down in Southport, different areas, they tend to be downsizers. Who just want that extra bedroom available when, like you said, when kids are in town or used as a home office or things like that. But we, we. We, we would be very comfortable sprinkling in some three-bedroom units, not an issue.
Great, um, it's, have you seen any of the units that were built behind the Delamar? In Southport?
Oh, yes, I've been, I've been into many of them. Those are little, those are probably bigger. Those are, yeah, some of those are twenty five hundred square feet, twenty six hundred square feet. Those were built primarily for resale, not for rental. The only flat units they have is, 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 is pretty much the brick building next to the, next to the, the restaurant there.
Right.
I've been through that.
And I, and my second question is, in reference to the storage, would it be? Some, a storage company that, that I use, like public storage, which is kind of dark, danky, ugly. Gate opening with your card or password, or more on a westies, um, storage, which is.
We envision a more, more, higher-end storage, building looking more like a New England style, you know, warehouse conversion to lofts. Not, not, higher in than I would believe, a, a, a better and higher end of look, looking building than the, than a westies. And, and, and we think honestly that the. Air-controlled, there's, there's a market there for, that, that support these types of buildings in this community.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Right at the other end again, Commissioner Braun?
In your narrative under storage, it says, envision tractor trailers permitted, but you do anticipate it being used by businesses as warehousing space. So are the units bigger than say a public storage, you know, like, are there?
All, there's all different size of unit. The biggest unit's probably what, eight hundred square, six hundred square feet?
Five hundred square feet.
Five hundred square feet.
Material moving equipment like forklifts and envision palletized stored items?
But you're going to have, you'll, you could.
Trucks in there, just not tractor trailers.
Well, yeah, you're going to have moving trucks coming in.
Yeah.
You know, I know when I rented for a year in between, we had a moving truck, put it in self, put it in self-storage.
And how many storage units will be in there on the four floors? That's, well, it depends on how big they are, I guess.
Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, it's going to look like a, like a, a grid similar to small apartments. a grid similar to small apartments with access and hallways. You don't, the good news, and you could, you could fit more in a self-storage as far as units, because you don't, with regard to the apartments, every apartment's gotta, every bedroom's gotta have a window. You don't have that restriction with regard to self-storage as you might have with regard to office.
Storage will not be dedicated to this facility, this development, anybody?
I would think that it, that, that will certainly get some use of the people that live there.
What's the percentage of affordable housing? It's eleven percent, right?
Yeah, that's what we're.
It's kind of low. Because it's gonna kill our ratio for eight dash thirty. I know you can't put an eight dash thirty G on a design industrial district anyway, but you could on the other part probably, I suppose. Although the other part's all regulated area for wetland. It seems like eleven percent is a little on the low side. Seems like fifteen percent would be better.
I'd have to.
The ratio is being killed with so much density with hardly any affordability. And also, is it at eighty percent?
I will, I will tell you, once you get to a certain percentage, the intensity increase that you're gonna get doesn't make sense to do fifteen percent. You may as well go do thirty percent and get the density.
But the whole development isn't.
Just telling you, one of, because I go through this with developers all the time. And if you gotta build fifteen percent, then you gotta build probably twenty-five percent of them just to break even on the fifty percent. Now you're building, you know, you're only, you're getting, you have to build a hundred percent of a building, but you're only gonna make any kind of profit on sixty percent of the building. At that point, people would rather have the increase in density.
Well, keeping in mind though, you do have.
Fifteen, I don't know, I, I did, done it all through town, most of the time. I don't know of anybody that's as high as fifteen percent.
Of course, you have different types of profit coming in from the storage and the retail and all that, right? I mean, it's not only residential development, so
Correct.
those are making money separately from that, right?
There, there's, there was a point where it does not make sense to do residential on a controlled-density program. If you want to put on a, if you want to put two-hundred-and-fifty units and you have to make eighty affordable, you can work, maybe you can work that. But if you're trying to keep a mid-level, mid-size, higher-quality residential, as, as the affordable pushes up, the desirability of it becomes less from a developer standpoint, not from a tenant occupant. And from a condo standpoint, as we've found out on other projects, it gets very difficult when you have the for-sale boundaries, for-sale limitations with regard to the, the the, the, the market value of units and the, and the cost of carrying the units. It's to be very difficult.
Um, what is, do you know the percentage of impervious surface? It looks like the whole thing's being paved over, the whole site almost.
Right now, it's probably a hundred percent. I don't know what it is.
Right now, it's just.
Yeah, right now, it's just, yeah, I, I, I'd have to get that.
You're being interesting to know.
Conceptually, it looks to me like it's probably, what'd you say, seventy percent, seventy, seventy-five percent? Which is consistent with your regulations, to be honest with you. I think your coverage in your, in.
T O D regulation, I guess.
Well, I think your, your coverage ratios are, I know they're definitely over fifty in the, in the design industrial and the.
So, so I have a concern that this is on the shore of Mill River. It's a tidal area influenced, and it will be flooding, and it is in the flood zone. So you're putting a lot of people in there. I know that you're building it above parking, but it still seems like a lot of density in an area where you're adding so much impervious surface, there's nowhere for the water to go.
We have to engineer it so that there's no increase in water runoff from this site.
Well, for the first peak flow, it will, if there's a.
We're, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to take this through with engineers. We have not done that. So it's gonna have to pass the muster for us to be able to come.
You can't raise the elevation, right? That of, of the site, you can't
Right, because it's.
Make it higher.
Right.
So it will be down to the, the level of that water, of the, of the river right there.
No, the river sits, the river sits ten feet below from where we are.
Once it's restored. I think it'll just be a natural shoreline. I mean, you'll have to check the permit. That's my understanding. And one last question about dimensions. The, it says there's three-quarters of an acre dedicated to the sort of amenities, I call it green space, or what should be green space. Is that, do you know what the dimensions are? Like, what is the?
Keep in mind, this is, no, it's, it's conceptual.
It goes from the post-road.
All the way back to the.
Train tracks. Well, the train tracks are very close, kind of like, to the back end of the property. And do you know what the horizontal distance is? It's, it's hard to tell how.
Sixty feet and maybe it's in, up in the corners, close to a hundred. So if you look at this parking space, each parking space is eighteen feet. You'd be probably fifty, at its narrowest, fifty-something feet, and at its greatest, close to a hundred. So if you just look, look at every parking space that's eighteen feet. If you want to look at it. We don't have a, we don't have a probably the best. I would say fifty feet, it's, it's here somewhere between fifty and fifty-five, somewhere close to a hundred.
I mean, just.
Keep in mind.
Yeah.
Conceptual.
I, I know, I'm.
I mean, this thing's, this thing is gonna, gonna move in ten different directions, but the concept of the push-pull of bringing before you a regulation that acts as an overlay, doesn't disturb the current zoning on the property, allows for residential use in an industrial, in, in a, in a limited-purpose area in an industrial zone, that's kind of the rig we want to come with you. And then we, we envision it shaping like this because we feel it's the best way to get the vision that the town's looking for, which is mixed-use, yet still keep some kind of industrial presence in a buffer. So that's, that's, that's kind, that's the concept we want to come back before you. And it sounds to me like if we can figure out, make sure that this doesn't doesn't have a negative effect on the Mill River, doesn't destroy traffic, doesn't pop up all over town, bring it to us and we'll consider it. That's what I'm hoping will hear.
When you say service retail, does that just mean stores or does it mean restaurants? The retail that you're anticipating?
Well, it's all, that's all independent parking. If you could, if we could put, if a restaurant could fit in there and we can accommodate its parking.
It will be retail. Okay.
Yeah, it'll be some type of service. You could have a nail salon there, you could have a barber there, you could have a little small store, you could have a general store, you could have a deli there. I mean, but it's gonna be things that you would see along the Post Road in your downtown center district.
As you know, we're undergoing changes to our P O C D and we've gotten a lot of public input on our P O C D. And one of the themes that we've received that they want to see represented in our P O C D is a community that is home for all. And this is luxury apartment buildings. Like, how is that home for all? It should be, you're kind of marketing to one sector. This isn't really attainable for most people who live in Fairfield.
You're gonna have, like you required.
We need senior.
All ten percent.
You know, young people need a place to live. Let's hopefully, they're staying in Fairfield. You know, seniors that we want to retain, which is good for our town, which is good for our state. I, I guess I would, I kind of agree with Kathy that we do need more affordable here, too. I don't know, I would, I would just like you to revisit that and because you, you want to text about it, right? I mean, this is partnership. I think we should just negotiate a little more on the affordable, affordable side.
I, I can't commit to that.
So going back to the conceptual ideas that have been proposed, as Mr. Wend said rightfully, this is some, what we've been considering in the sending out the Center Design District, did I say it right? Thank you. Center Design District to include this property, which would, if, if that were the case, that would probably be good for the residential and the retail buildings, not the storage building.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to have certain modifications probably to the Center Design business with regard to.
I'm just saying as is.
What the box looks like.
If you extended it as is right now, your project would be there but for the storage building. In grand forty-thousand-foot views scenario. Okay. So we have that to, because that's been in the works, I think, recently. So I am not, and obviously, it's not in there now. You haven't been really reviewing it and.
Oh, I mean, we could come in tomorrow with an application for self-storage and we're a hundred percent by the regulations, so.
Yeah. But you've come in through the, have you as in your, have you considered utilizing the potential of extending the Center Design District in this? Meaning, is the storage building so essential or?
The hard part about that is, when you talk about that, you, you have so many stakeholders from basically Mill Plain Road all the way to here, and this property being so unique, I think then what most people have to deal with, and the size of it being so different, that we felt it's better to deal with our situation and, and then not wait for this thing to, and also, it's been three years in trying to get to filter out the industrial users that wanted to come in here. The large apartment developers that wanted to come in here and come in with a balanced proposal. So that's the reason we're kind of taking the bull by its horn and coming to you versus, versus waiting things to evolve, or coming through with uses. I don't think that, you know, we've dismissed a lot of the uses that I don't, that we probably would, would be able to get approved on the current zoning, but we don't think make the best sense for the property in the long term.
But this project depends upon the storage building.
Yes, storage is, yes.
Kind of in many, it might be most, is, might be your anchor by all accounts.
It, it, it allow, the, the, the storage building allows us to develop the property with only a hundred units of residential on six acres. So it's that balancing act.
That's fair. What, if the storage building wasn't there and you had the Center Design District, what would you think the unit count would be for that if you, if you chose to have like the other two big buildings? What do you?
You could, you'd easily fit two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty units there, no problem.
And that's prob, that extra hundred-and-fifty units is probably what you would need to replace the storage building. Everything that goes with it.
And then, you know, we're here with something that's we could figure out to be permitted, and half the town's screaming about how they can't get through the traffic light.
Well, that aside, I'm just, yeah, and that, that's all fair points.
So it's all trying to make it all work, too.
I want to just get a sense of if, because it's not just even currently as it stands, you have currently as it stands, you have your potential proposal.
Anyway, yeah.
And then frankly, what we wanted, we were thinking about doing as well, you kind of have three different avenues, well, you have multiple avenues, but those are the three distinct ones that are at least out there. I just want to understand that, at least with our avenue, where that was heading as best we can.
I would think you'd end up with a much more, a much denser residential project.
Probably extra height, probably four stories, five and a half, four and a half, five. You'd have the retail below. Potentially, I guess, because that, well, potentially, we would need it for that zoning.
And that rig needs a lot.
That's not an easy, that's not an easy lift. I'm asking, it's not an easy lift to begin with. I understand that.
Work.
That's a forty-thousand-foot view.
Right.
Type discuss, this is a forty-thousand-foot view, this type discussion. Any thoughts about parking garages? Does that have any thought about that to help with green space or centralizing? And that's exceptionally expensive, I suspect, as we saw a trademark, but.
Unless you're, unless you're, unless you're doing you know, the density gets to be very high, to the point that you can go higher, but parking underneath, I mean, even parking, just for, give you for an example, parking underneath a building, meaning building a garage underneath your building probably still runs you ten to fif, ten to fifteen thousand dollars per space. Parking garage is probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars of space now. So you, you just, you, you, you don't make that work.
It's fine. I just want to, I'm just asking the questions to vet the ideas and the alternatives.
That's the hard part about zoning. You have regulations, you have planted conservation, you have natural, you have, you have you have a unique properties, and then you have what will work. Because in the end, we can all approve something in accordance with regulations, but if nobody's buying it, nobody's living in it, and it causes a mess for that area of town, we haven't really accomplished anything. And that's, that's kind of what's taken us three years to get to you since our clients took possession. And this is what we've come up with as we think the thing that flies best for that area and given the zoning requirements contextual requirements of living, of building next to a train, a train track and a, a major traffic generator on the Post Road, and somehow a restaurant sitting on a public road in the middle of our project. So talk about challenges.
Another small part I would say is for the storage building that's closest to the street, I wonder if it's work, considering or designing it similar to the residences, residential buildings nearby, so you have a similar look. It doesn't, you have the residential, residential, and obviously, the whole building, the whole storage building will be storage building, but maybe keep it, have that same have the same style as the residential, so it looks like the same thing.
Basically, continue this to say that cutoff.
Yeah.
And brought your storage there.
Yeah, the, the back of it would be the same, but it's just that, as you said, that, that fronting square maybe is a thought just to keep it uniform. I, I don't know how it would look. I'll leave it to you.
We, we honestly looked at that, but we, we just thought we're making a fake facade on a building.
You are making a fake facade.
So we, we, we thought the better solution would be, let's make it look like an old mill building that got renovated and now with storage. So we thought that, that had some root in New England's, you know, lore and, and, and might be a better use and.
That's fine. I just, the thought that crossed my mind, I'm, I mean, I.
It crossed ours, too.
Okay. I mean, I think the main point is, as I, I think I'm, with my questioning is, you have this proposal for the, the commission for us. You have this proposal. You have, I don't think existing is gonna work. We don't think we want existing as it is with the industrial. And then the, what's it on the side?
Design commercial.
Thank you, design commercial. But you have, at least with this proposal, yet to be determined overlay potentially that leads to this for extending the Center Design District as what we initially thought, which would lose the storage building. So, I mean, I guess the, one of the preliminary things, I imagine one of your major questions to us is is the storage, is the storage building a hard no for us? And for me, I don't think it is. I would like to know more about it. I don't think it's a hard no for me, though. I, I think Commissioner Corcillo said it right. It, it's not exactly the most exciting thing in the world, but it's an, and Commissioner Levy said, it is a good, I think it might be a good use for that area. It's low low maintenance in a lot of ways, low, low impact is the word, I think. So I think that has some appeal to it. And it's, you know, good tax base, I'm sure, you know, all those things to it. Certainly not as exciting as restaurants, clothing stores, et cetera. I mean, obviously, the residential with the retail below, I would think is a given. Park access is good, if not even just a first good start, but, you know, most of the way there with other things that need to be addressed with as Commissioner Braun and Commissioner Harrison have said, but needed. So I mean, to the extent that it's helpful, you know, I would like to hear more about it. I don't think the storage building, which I suspect is probably, as I said, your, your keystone issue, is not a hard no for me. It's, it's not, you know, it's, it's a yes, and I'm interested in hearing more about it.
Like I said, it's one of those things. What allows you to really develop the site without overburdening the site? And it's the way that you can get the tax revenue, the density of building, and not overburden the roadways or the site itself.
I appreciate it. And I guess I'll ask the commission, I mean, if you feel comfortable, I mean, these three of us have said about the storage building to give the applicant more guidance or comfort or guidance, however you want to say it, if you have any thoughts on the storage building. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, I think I'm okay with the storage. I, I, storage facility, I'm, you know, interested in learning more about it. I'm not a hard no at all. I would just reiterate, reiterate again that I would like to see you guys really have a conversation with the stakeholders. I think there's a lot of public scrutiny here. And stakeholder buy-in is a good thing. It will only benefit you in the end. So I'd like you to contact and have a conversation with the Shellfish Commission, the Harbor Management Commission, Conservation Commission, and Fair Plan, who are all who did a lot of swag money again on the cleanup for many years. I think that, that will only help you. And I'd also like.
They're gonna, they're, they're gonna either be here at a public hearing.
Okay, ahead of it.
Or them separately, so there's.
It'll help us, though. It'll make me more comfortable, sir. That's just how I am.
I reach out on all my projects.
And then I would also, again, appeal to Mr. Wend and this commission to have an independent traffic study done for this whole area. I think that will really help us, too, and, and guiding what we do with this parcel land.
Oh, you got a lot of traffic, this.
I mean, I think the thing is, according to your, your print, there were only a few cars there. I don't know what time of day that was.
I mean, it's gonna be volume. My sideline, you're not gonna have to worry about, I suspect.
Yes. Like I said, we have to make it work, too. So that's, that's, that, that is how this thing has evolved.
We want to work with you on this, and that's why I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Commissioner Levy and then Braun.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I think the storage unit is a creative and appropriate use for this spot in terms of the buffer. It allows you to carry the project. in terms of the buffer, uh, it allows you to carry the project, not have to overdevelop it with units. And just in terms of perhaps on the post-road area there with that little bump out, you know, maybe that would just be for the, on the first floor or somewhere, um, an exercise room or an amenity for the units, and charge a little more rent, so...
Yeah.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, I, I think it's, um, the sca- it could be scaled back a little bit. I, I think it's just too much impervious surface. It's, the whole site is pretty much paved over, that's one thought. The other thought is, you don't have to answer this, but would you consider the possibility of dedicating, as open space, the area roughly from halfway through that parking lot near Martell's down to the river, either to let Asputuck Land Trust manage it or own it, or the town, or some combination, to take it off your hands, perhaps, or just to ensure that we, the river that so many parties spend so much time and money restoring stays as natural as possible? It is an established greenway. I know Asputuck Land Trust has as its mission to restore a greenway all up and down Mill River. And what you're doing here is not that at all. I mean, it's pretty, but it belongs in Disneyland, not, not along the shore of Mill River. So, um, I would like to see that addressed somehow. And I would like to see something scaled back. Certainly, I would hope you could use impervious, I mean, pervious pavers for whatever parking you do have, but it's just, to me, too much, too much development on that parcel. I'd like to see something scaled back somewhere. What's my question on it?
No comments? Or is there anything further?
No, I appreciate your time, we will take and account all your comments. I talked with staff, I don't know if you'll give any more guidance to staff that will help us craft some, an amendment or a regulate, any, any guidance that we could have in crafting the regulation? I think I got the bulk of it tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Back to you with the regulation.
Yeah, I, I think my concern was always in making sure that this doesn't bleed other areas of the town as of rights. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure if we can give much guidance, because it's not much thought that we've had, and the planning that we had isn't, went in a different direction. So, um, I mean, I certainly, I'm sure staff will give as much help as they normally do, but, I mean, sitting here, I mean, I, besides what I've said, I'm not sure how much help...
I kind of get where you're coming at, and I know, I know the push and the pulls that we're up against, and, uh, we'll try and get, try and get back to you with a, hopefully, a proposed amendment that works, with a conceptual plan that works before we spend...
You go with your...
Thousands of dollars on a, on a deep...
Your thought is to make sure you get a regulation amendment in first, so you, yeah, okay. That make, we've seen that, uh, previously over at, um, Metro Station, forget the site, so, okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
I think I exceeded my twenty minutes, but I'm prepared.
Oh, yeah, but...
For last on the evening, you know it wasn't gonna be twenty minutes.
One last, uh, thing, not related to staff.
No, Mr. Wend.
Uh, we've talked, Chairman, and, and I think we alluded to it last time, that we are intending to, with the, all the... The commission, so we don't, so that is, will be our game plan.
We come, but we're not gonna be there.
Dallas and Wood.
Dallas is, yeah.
No, that's it, so that's great. Uh, that being the end of the agenda, I'll close the hearing. Thank you, everyone.